We'll go ahead and call the order of the June 10, 2021, meeting with five city council of the clerk based fellow role.
Mayor Sercina.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
I see Ted's here. Can we get them unmuted somehow?
I hope not.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you. Very good. Well, thank you. All present accounted for. Nice to see everybody. Look at the, look at all these folks who have come down to be with us in the heat. Welcome and good to have you with us and good to have our new officers here and some of their family members here. So a good evening and welcome. Would you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
By John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, the next item is citizens' presentation. This is where anybody either in the council chambers or if someone pops on the virtual here that wants to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Please make yourself known to us. Kurt, come on up. State your name and address for the record.
First of all, thank you for being here. My name's Ted Nemmers and I did live at 10570 Clark Street until they took my street away. So but basically the reason I'm here is I just want to say thank you. It's a these folks have been working on our street have just put in a yeoman's job and it's been hot. Sure like to have some rain, but with the work continues and I just want to say on behalf of my neighbors, myself, thank you very much. It's going well. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that very much. And I know you've done your part in the planning as well. That's the thanks for all your efforts. Appreciate your compliments. Is there anybody else to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Moved by John and seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. It passes five to zero. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to a really fun presentation. This is always, this is always terrific. Chief, I'm going to have you come forward. We're going to issue the oath of office to the six new officers.
Great. Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, this is one of my favorite things to do and we haven't been here together the last, what, 14, 16 months? And so over the last year or so, we've hired six new police officers and we wanted to give an opportunity to do a public swearing in. We've already introduced them to you along the way, but wanted to bring them all up here. We don't come on up and line up here. We've, tonight, we are swearing in Officer Maggie Jennet, Officer Kyle Halsey, Officer Dylan Vento, Officer Courtney Owen, Officer Blake Crannell, and Officer Odessa Clark. So Your Honor, I'll turn it over to you to do the oath.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to see all of you and congratulations. So we're going to start the oath of office and then we will also please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
The Constitution of the state of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially best of my ability discharge all of the duties
discharge all of the duties.
Of the office of police officer
of the office of police officer.
City of Clive, Iowa.
City of Clive, Iowa.
Is now your answer required, Your Honor?
Now, the oath of office is required by, by state code, but in Clive, we, we like to go just a little bit further and we also include an oath of honor that holds us to just that little bit of a higher standard. So Mayor, the oath of honor.
Chief, it's my pleasure. Police officers, please raise your hand and repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My character.
My character. For the public trust.
For the public trust.
I will always have the courage
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others
To hold myself and others.
Have a role for our actions.
Have a role for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
The agency that serves.
The agency that serves.
So, yeah. Again, I'm sure congratulations. Great to have you on the team.
You must do.
We are going to step out and do another sign their votes here and we'll have an opportunity for families to take some pictures out there and we'll let you get on and move the rest of the show. So one more time.
Richard, do you want to move up the model while they're doing that? Probably bring it up here.
Wait, emptied out pretty fast in here, didn't it? Well, thanks to our new officers and their families. So appreciate that. Very exciting. Now we're going to move to action items. The first action item is a resolution approving a contract with Dan Perry for public art in the Clive Public Safety Building with a budget of $50,000. And Matt, would you please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off and then turn it over to Dan to do his presentation right on over here. So with the public safety building that's under construction, in the facility committee conversations, one of the things that we talked about is having some type of public art feature associated with the facility. And over the last number of months, Richard and his staff have been helping with the commissioning selection process. Tiffany also with his staff have been helping with this and we sent out basically a call to artists like we've done in past commissions and received a number of applications and through that app, those applications selected three finalists to then receive a small stipend to further evolve their concept from what they presented in their application. The three finalists that were selected, their materials are included in your packet in terms of the presentations that they made to a selection committee that consisted of the police and fire chiefs, myself, assistant city manager, Richard, and the mayor. Following those presentations for the finalists, we really got excited with Dan's presentation. He really took the concept of what you do with a finalist stipend to really further evolve the concept. And I think he'll show that in his presentation of what he started with to really embracing some of the feedback that we gave in terms of what we were expecting. We really liked what he had showed us and the materiality of what he had showed us in his original concept, but really wanted to think of ways how could embrace public safety and also the community. And I think with what you'll see tonight in the presentation and the model that actually he, he created for the finalist interview stage, a really great evolution of this concept. And there'll be further, if, if the council's supportive of this tonight, even further tweaks and evolution of this. But we were really blown away by what Dan presented to us. And so I want to give Dan an opportunity to walk through his presentation a little bit for you to get to know him and then ask any questions you may have. And then we'll have some conversation after that. So Dan, you want to come up?
Dan, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Before I start, I'd like to start the video for your presenter.
Yeah.
We're trying to set all these presentations up in a way so then you still see them in the Zoom and everything.
So don't be freaked out by looking at your stuff.
When I, there's a little side story, like the Friday lectures at University of Northern Iowa where I teach, they, they tape those sometimes and I'll catch myself watching myself as I'm talking, especially now that we're in the Zoom world. But anyway. Well, thank you again for having me. And as Matt mentioned, I developed this model based on feedback that I had from my initial concept, which is it's gonna, do I need to click through something?
I can open your presentation.
Yeah, thank you. So the basis of my artwork generally when I approach these public commissions is to try and tell the story of the place, but also sometimes that's not easy to do in a single artwork because places are diverse. There's a lot of different things going on. There's different things happening in terms of the history of a place, where it's going, some of this sort of notable attractions and things like that. So when I start researching a place like this, I start by researching the city, how it started, where it grew from. And then sort of find interesting things about it in terms of like how it's sort of evolved over time. And you know, a lot of Iowa's cities are, are not too dissimilar. There's a lot of things that happen a lot of times. I know in Des Moines, places started out as like a streetcar hub and evolved into what you see today. And that growth is, I think, a testament to how fast and how exciting the times are we are in, in the, in the city. So this is my initial concept. I don't know if you can kind of see it there now. So I know Clive has a strong connection to nature, things like trails and things like that. And so I started thinking about, well, this space is going to be a space where people are going to be coming in and out of it, engaging it. It's not going to be like a museum where somebody's going to be stopping and sort of studying a painting. So I wanted it to be something that somebody could walk in and sort of have an experience with it and continue about their business, but also have this sort of connection to the outside world. So this idea of these sort of leaves blowing in into the space. So as you see, they kind of, from the front of the space where it's at the large window starts with the largest leaf and they sort of scale down as you enter into the space. So thinking about Clive in terms of like what signifies the city, but also what role this building is going to play in, in the sort of the functionality of the city. And I started thinking about the trails. I started thinking about the map and how it's all kind of tied together with Walnut Creek. Thinking about the logo of the city and how right there in the logo, this idea of sort of an idyllic landscape with nature involved as a part of it, even in the, the city's motto of distinct by nature. And then also taking elements from you know, imagery of the fire department and the police department and how I could take those and not just make signage, but make something that represents the role those things play in the community. And so in my research of Iowa, I found that the most common tree is the American elm tree. And there are some disputes. I would have guessed walnut, but most of the sources I found said American elm was the most common species. So I used that as my starting point and use those as sort of a canvas as a way to create these forms that would sit in the space. And then I went through and looked at aerial maps of the city of Clive and sort of divided it up into five sections. Because that just sort of, in my design process, it's sort of neatly worked out to have five sections. And so taking that map and sort of distilling it down into a very bare street map, taking that and sort of tracing it, trying to pull out landmarks, but also trying to maintain the natural elements that as viewed from above. So like the creeks and the trails. And so then here, you can see I transposed it onto a section of leaf and thinking about how each one of these leaves moves through. So it starts in the easterly most part of the city moves to the westerly most. And I know this goes north, south. It just didn't work out that way. So I started with each one and thinking about each one representing a different element. So as you can see in this first one, I thought about sort of an all encompassing image of what this place is about, and it's about protecting community. But also building community. And so thinking about how this house is built on this shield, a protective shield, and also olive branches representing peace and also the sort of the stripe in the back with the idea of it being part of the green belt. Moving to the second leaf, which has a fire theme. So taking elements from the badge, so the hook and the X and then the I'm going to get this wrong. It's not an iron cross, but it's the all teeth. Thank you. Also taking elements from the police insignia. So the arrows for protection, the, the olive branch for peace. Underneath the shield, again, protecting the green belt, highlighting places like Clive Lake here. And then, you know, I got to a point where I started to think about how in a more esoteric way does this thing represent community? And so I thought this idea of two hands coming to reach, whether it's they're shaking to meet to build community, they're helping one another up, but this idea of, of how community comes from within. And then the final piece is based on the Clive City sign, as you can see there with the sort of undulating surface and the tree line, thinking about how that sort of ties it together and thinking about it being open ended enough that it still says Clive without it being in text, but it also gives it a sense that Clive is growing. And so thinking about how they exist in the space. So this one will be visible from the street and trying to integrate lighting and thinking about in terms of low maintenance and ease of use. These are my little miniature versions of more expensive lights, but they're LED powered, basically state lights that can be set to any one of the 255 RGB colors. So basically thousands of colors. And each one would have a different angle set with it. I will work with a theater production lighting specialist. And so he's, he's sort of given me recommendations on how this will work in the space. And after seeing it today in person, I can see how it worked really well. So here's a version of the lights. If you want to get into technical things. But here's sort of a basic statement. So the title of it is Zephyr, which despite what it sounds, it's actually called a gentle breeze. So thinking about how people come into this space, I want it to be a calming effect as they're moving in and out of the space. But at the same time, they can walk by here and point it and say, well, that's, that's where I live or, you know, things like that. So having this different experience every time they, they, they enter the space, I think will be something that makes it unique to Clive, but also I, I feel like gets to the point right now in the design process after our initial meetings that there's opportunities here to tweak things to make it even more specific to Clive. Like we talked about some color changes and some specific symbols that may be more appropriate to what fully represents the police and fire here. So so, yeah, any questions?
If I could add on to, to Dan, two comments is we also talked about even the shapes of the, of the leaves and thinking about the, the most popular trees or the most frequent trees we have in the green belt. And could we even think about different leaves representing those trees in the green belt? And like that today, we got a chance to have Dan in the actual space and really get to see the sense of the volume of the space and how those five leaves could really fill that space. And then we actually have spots above the vestibule as you walk into the building to put the lights where you can't really see the actual light fixtures themselves, but how they would illuminate. So it definitely was a good opportunity to kind of feel how it would look in the space today. So.
Dan, great presentation. Thank you, counsel. Questions?
Yeah, I love it. It's, it's, you know, it's a great representation of Clive. It's very smart. You've done great time work right in here. My question to you is it too smart? So in other words, we all get it up here because we all understand the geography and the streets of Clive and the various symbols. The common person walking in, how will they be able to relate to that? Is there going to be plaques explaining it? Is there going to be maybe something that they can look at that they could read and tie that in? How does the common person going in start to understand this piece of artwork without, you know, that we just may not understand Clive the way we do?
Sure. Well, I think there's, there's kind of two answers to that. I mean, I think on multiple levels, I think people will get the overall gesture of the idea of leaves blowing into the space. And the aerial map has been abstracted enough that it's interesting as just what it is, as a, as a shape, you know, the streets and everything. It's not just a straight grid. So there's a lot of interesting things happening there. I think it's a bonus if the person's able to recognize that, well, that's, that's my street right there. So at this scale, I think, and at the speed of people walking past it, I think some people may have that experience, but I also don't think it will detract from the artwork for the the average person who may not have the knowledge of Clive that everybody does here. The other side of it is I, I'm very open to that idea of having that as you know, the way technology is now, I know there's several apps out there that people can use to interact with public art and, and natural or at least landmark things where you can pull up an app and it'll say like you're, here, this is what this one means. This is what this one means. And it, they even have audio files that connect to it. So I think there's lots of opportunities to that. I, I didn't want to propose it upfront, thinking about how the functionality of this space, I wouldn't want to clutter it up if there was some sort of ADA restrictions or, or something with signage that I didn't want to get involved with early on in the stage, but I'm interested in talking about that idea. So.
I'd be interested in seeing something that explains to the public without getting on an app.
Sure.
You know, my sense is that a plaque on the wall would, wouldn't violate any ADA restrictions right there, but something, somebody to read and then kind of, kind of, you know, put the dots together, right?
Yeah, no, I think that would be something that could happen in, you know, the vestibule here as they enter in, you know, and it could just be a simple line drawing. So yeah, I'm totally open to that.
Councilmember Klein, I'll add to that as well. We all, we have two monitors that will be in the lobby on either side that will be displaying various information. And so one thing that I've thought about is you could have even the, almost the, how this evolved on those screens as well as information about police and fire that we could use as well as, as well as a plaque. So we could even take it to another level because we have two spaces that are going to be, have inset monitors just below the pieces right in the lobby.
That'd be great, too.
To tie it into the map, and you did it in your initial presentation and concept, but to tie that into to the districts, the falls, the wilds, that, you know, let's, let's bring that kind of back into the equation, too. Something we spent a lot of time and effort on. And this is a great tie in for that. So a small interpretive piece, I think is a great idea. Susan, you had some thoughts?
I think it's fantastic. So can't wait to see it. As large as life. I'm just wondering about any issues related to cleaning. Have you thought about how we keep it looking good when it's hung like that?
The nice thing is it's inside. So if there's anything outside, mother nature wins, but it, it will just require like a light dusting every so often. The paint inside should hold up just fine, no problem. It's lightweight aluminum, so I'm not concerned about you know, structural issues of supporting it from the ceiling. So yeah, I think it'd be very low maintenance. The lights themselves are easy just to switch out. If something goes bad, you just switch the light out. It's not complicated. Initially, I thought about integrating light into the actual pieces, but then that would require conduit and all those sort of things. And then it would have to be like access panels and all this complication to service it. So in this way, it's just somebody needs a ladder and just changes the light bulb, basically.
Great.
What are the thoughts?
And I would add to that, too. We've already engaged with the architect and the construction manager on how this can be realized in the space. And we're already identifying some conduit. Just an additional conduit run for the lights in the vestibule area and talked through kind of how they're, how the cabling is affixed to the ceiling and ready, kind of worked out a process for that. So there's a kind of some, some tweaks underway in terms of the design of the lobby space to accommodate this project.
John, you have?
Yeah, just one thing to expand beyond that. And this is going to be just a magnificent piece. I'd like for us to be able to share it with the world and figure out how we can put it on the website with all this so that they can actually see a virtual without physically being here.
Talked already about any number of dimensions of storytelling that we can do with this, but definitely a video that gets people not just looking at it down below, but via a camera up into the piece potentially as well, if we can do that safely. The other exciting thing that about this piece that we've discussed is with the lighting elements, it gives us opportunities for all the folks who are zipping by fast at Hickman to still have a really quick and interesting experience. Because they're going to be able to see that leaf that's there in the front. But we can also then light up the vestibule area with different colors, depending on different themes or different holidays, something that makes it, oh, I wonder what they're doing right now over at the Clive Public Safety Facility. Drive by and you get to see, oh, they've lit it up red. They've lit it up blue. They've done things to make this something that feels that like even when you're on the street, you're interacting with.
I like it as well. I appreciate it. I, I get what Erica's saying on the plaque and, and we go to museums and we look at that plaque. But it's also okay to come in and one out of a thousand people figure it out, right? That's kind of cool to me, that part. Don't give them the answer right away, right? Have the plaque to the back because those people that do, it's, they interpret it to what they want it to be, right? And for those that catch it as that's the streets, that's, that's, I'd like to have a longer talk with that individual that comes through that door. Maybe you ought to check them out before they leave, but, but I think that's, that's a good thing, right? For them to have to sit there and wonder for a little while before they look at that plaque on the wall.
Well, and I think just as an art teacher, and I also serve on public art committees, that the idea of educating the public in different ways about you know, using art to educate not only about the city, but also about art, I think is important. And, you know, I use the term Easter eggs, like they used to use Easter eggs. We can find them in DVDs or films like that that you know, they could potentially find like, oh, that's where, you know, grandma lives or, or something like that in a way. So yeah, I think finding that balance where there's enough information, like this is where we started. And so now go in there and see what you think.
Ted, you're on. Any comments or questions for you?
Yeah, just the comment is that, you know, I was blown away by this and, you know, I loved hearing Dan's explanation of how he came up with it. You know, how he captured the essence of Clive. And this is truly amazing to me as someone who's not artistic at all. So you know, I, I can't wait to see it. And I think it's exciting to see what it's going to look like from the street as well as Pete was kind of talking about. So just well done.
Well, that I guess we should move the resolution.
And I would add, Your Honor, too, I don't know if you want to talk, that you incorporate your students in every one of your projects as well.
I do. So I, I, I tried to hire a couple of students to help me fabricate these sculptures so they get some experience and you know, they get to see me in the role outside of teacher. And, you know, there's a lot of different things that happen when you're teaching with a goal in mind as opposed to sort of open end teaching the rules. And so like, you know, this is really how you put on masking tape. I may say it this way in class, but in real life, this is how we really do it.
We got also have them come down and help us dust the
I mean, the good thing about college students is they're always making more.
Any other questions for Dan?
Resolution approve the contract with Dan Perry for public art in the Clive Public Safety Building for $50,000.
Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John. Is there further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. That passes unanimously, five to zero. Dan, we look forward to working with you. Good job and good job right now. And we'll say it when we cut the ribbon. So looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, the second action item is a resolution approving the fifth amended and restated intergovernmental agreement, consolidated dispatch center, Westcom. And Matt, you can guide us on that one.
We'll get you set up here in a minute.
Chief, we're going to get it.
Left and right arrows. Arrows go back and forth, left and right.
Where's that?
Bottom left hand corner.
Yeah, I thought it was. This one's a bit better.
Right there. That's the one.
All right.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you guys for your time and being considerate of that. I'm not going to take a long time to go through a whole bunch of stuff, but want to give you a little bit of updates. I'm Darren Ryan. I'm the chief of Westcom Emergency Communications. Westcom is the emergency 911 public safety answering point for Clive, Norwalk, Urbana, Milwaukee, and West Des Moines. We answer all the 911 calls for those five cities and all those, also dispatch for all the police, fire, and EMS agencies in those cities. Reason being, West Des Moines has an extra logo. There's their fire and EMS are two separate entities. So they have two separate badges that they still utilize. Over the past month, past year, COVID has obviously had a big impact on us and our services. The first five months of 2020, we saw a great decline in the number of calls that we took and dispatched out. The first five months of 2021, we've since increased by over 1,000 911 calls, over 6,000 non-emergency calls and over a total of 8,000 calls for service in total because and over a total of 8,000 calls for service in total because now that people are getting back to their normal everyday lives, we're seeing more traffic stops, we're seeing more accidents, more people calling in, other suspicious people, things that occur in everyday life. So we're getting back to normal, which is actually a great sign, even though it does come with the increased call volumes. Over the past year, Westcom has actually worked through its very first strategic plan. We've had three areas that we focused on, first being governance. And part of the goal was this was to be able to give back to the cities, some of the say in how their money is actually spent. So we've readjusted the governance model and the board for Westcom. We're going to have an executive committee that's going to be made up of the city jurisdictions, the people that they put on there as far as mayors are most likely the city managers that are actually going to have a say in the operations of Westcom more, more so than they do now. We are also redoing our management committee to where it's going to give the police and fire chiefs a more hand on opportunity in the day to day operations and how we actually do what they want us to do. So that's a couple of things we're looking at. We want to make sure as we grow, along with all the cities that are growing, that our service levels don't decline. That's one of the things we are really looking hard at is to ensure that our service levels do not drop for the cities that are supporting us. We want to make sure that we have the staffing to support that. And we're also looking at potentially getting a new facility as we're kind of outgrown where we are right now. And the last one was the service expectations. Again, I alluded to not letting our standards of performance drop. We're actually getting ready. We're in the process of one, getting ready to start a second national level certification and accreditation. That's going to help out our police and fire departments. It'll make their accreditation processes a lot easier just because it'll become a checkbox for them once we get ours. So that's one of the things we're looking at and we don't want to catch our cities off guard. We're going to actually lay out a plan that what will be coming forward with new technologies and needs and planning that out ahead of time so that it's not just showing up at your door saying, hey, we need more money. You guys will not be caught off guard that way. As mentioned, we did update our 2080 and at that point I'm going to actually turn it over to Matt and let him do the speaking as our chairman of the management committee.
Thanks, Darren. So as the council knows, I serve as the chair of the management committee for Westcom and really the the work over the last year, one of the huge kind of short term focuses out of the governance committee of the strategic plan was an update to the 2080. We had recognized that the evolution of the governance of 2080 of of Westcom needed to happen at another, at the next level. And so through that process and discussion, we also had the city of Windsor Heights approach us as wanting to become a member of Westcom as well. So we decided in this 2080 update that's before you this evening to really encompass both of those things in this and the new 2080, this is the fifth restated 2080 agreement. So that gives you a sense of how long Westcom has been around, you know, over 20 years and the evolution of the organization. And so the the 2080 lays out a number of things that were requested by the member agencies and one of the main things that was talked about was evolution of the membership levels. So the original concept of Westcom, Urbanale, Clive and West Des Moines were the original owners of the system. And a number of years ago, we started to bring on contract users with the city of Norwalk about seven years ago and the city of Waki about five years ago. One thing we heard from them was, okay, what is the path for us to ownership at some point? They chose to come in as contract users, yet contributing a significant amount of dollars to the agency on an annual basis, particularly very fast growing community like Waki, you know, their contribution on an operating budget level is actually higher than Clive's at this point. And so they were curious, okay, what does that look like? And so what we did here in the 2080 through kind of our research and discussions with, with all the members has come up with the membership levels that you see on this slide. So a new member coming in like City of Windsor Heights, which is before you this evening as part of the new 2080 would become, come in as a provisional authority member. So they would be kind of ex officio on the various boards. They would not have a vote for the first three years. So basically they're buying into the, to the system, if you will, with their investment. After the three years, they would transition to a partial authority member, which Waki would be at under this current 2080 where they have a vote, but they don't necessarily have rights to any of the assets that what that Westcom has. Full authority members like the three original owners and now the city of Norwalk, who is after seven years has invested enough in the system and enough assets in the system to now reach that full authority member. They now, along with the three original cities, have rights to the assets. What they're, the only time that that would come up and in consequence would really if a member decided to leave, they would have a right to some value of the depreciated assets is one thing I wanted to make, make sure you're aware of that. It is not necessarily the original ownership or our purchase cost of the assets. It's the depreciated value at that point in time. So this was really probably the biggest thing that we talked about in terms of trying to find that 25% credit was the right level that made sense for everybody, recognizing the original owner's investments. But why, but also giving a path to ownership for the newer members. And with that, with Windsor Heights being added, this would be the coverage areas for, for Westcom. You'll notice down by Norwalk because they serve some fire districts outside of their community. Their, the square gets a little bit bigger there with coming in Norwalk because they serve outside that area. But the nice thing with Windsor Heights is our digital radio system coverage already covered them as a community. So they do not need to add any towers. They don't need to add, they just have an upfront cost that's kind of laid out in the MOU that I put in the packet for reference where they're going to be having to acquire some equipment, some licensing. They're going to have to run some fiber to their facility to be able to tie into the Westcom's technology systems and that's going to be all on their dime. They are going to join. They have, I've already paid their, their two year upfront payment. That's non-refundable to come into the system. And so they will be, and then that third year, their third year of their provisional authority member status will just be a part of the regular budget process and then they'll become a partial authority member. So this was first presented to the city of Windsor Heights back in May. They adopted unanimously, was very excited to join the system. It's also been approved by Norwalk, city of West Des Moines earlier this week. Before you tonight, city of Urbanale on Tuesday, and then the last one will be city of Waki. They, them and West Des Moines have the same council meeting. So the third Monday there in June will be the city of Waki. Considering the 2080 agreement, the actual memorandum of understanding with Windsor Heights is just between city of Windsor Heights and the operating agency, which is West Des Moines. So the really the only action before you tonight is the adoption of the updated 2080 agreement. Moving forward, as the chief alluded to, we are working on a rehosting of the network. This, this stems from some network issues we had back in December of 2019. We're in a much better place than we were at, at that time period and now looking to take it to even further further levels with this rehosting that is happening hopefully by the end of this calendar year. Really setting up an isolated network for Westcom within the West Des Moines system, which was an expectation of all the member communities. As the chief alluded to, service expectation work as we start to add members, new members like a city of Windsor Heights, the we need to better clearly define the service expectations of all the member agencies to make sure we're not losing any performance as we add new members. And as chief alluded to, the accreditation process with AppCo and Kalia, which will benefit just like our police department who just received their Kalia certification and Urbanale and West Des Moines who has theirs on the police side. And I know Waki is actually working towards their Kalia certification. So that all ties together as the chief alluded to earlier. So this would be the new population in total. Well, Westcom will continue to be the second largest PSAP in the state of Iowa behind the city of Des Moines. And with the growth of these communities, as the chief alluded to, related to a facility, we're going to have a, get a little bit of breathing room in the existing facility for some time. Buys us some time. The city of West Des Moines is doing some office relocation for some of their EMS staff. Well, that will provide some breathing room in Station 19. That will buy us some time to be able to add four more councils, right? In the dispatch center. But there is going to come a time here in the future, and this is again, part of the strategic plan and part of the change in the governance structure where now the new management committee will be the, the six city managers for the six member cities with, with Windsor Heights is just being an ex officio member in the, in the current five being voting members. And then an operations committee that will have its own chair of all the chiefs that will make recommendations to the management committee. So we felt with the, the, the financial level that we're getting to with Westcom, you know, over five, $6 million annual budget. That it was the now, we're now at a point with some of these bigger decisions that are going to come down the line with facilities to really bring the city managers into the fold. I'm sure that they will still probably select me as their chair in the short term anyway, that although it is now a two year term in the 2080 that somebody wrote in for consideration, but really look forward to evolving this governance structure and, you know, making sure that we're meeting the expectations of a substantially growing population with the member communities that we have in Westcom. So these would be your six new cities and all the new agencies. With that, be happy to answer any questions that you all may have on this 2080, new 2080.
I have two. What was that white donut? Is that? Oh, Plaza or on the south side of Des Moines, part that isn't.
Oh, was it the gap between coming and city of West Des Moines, the unincorporated part? I think that's the unincorporated part of the county. Yeah. That's not incorporated into the city of West Des Moines. That'd be rural Warren County that isn't covered by a fire district that the city of Norwalk responds to.
And then what cybersecurity issues are you having with Westcom? Anything that is?
Currently, nothing at this time. And in fact, we're very excited to be taking our security to a whole nother level with what we're doing with the rehosting. Our security posture is, is much stronger than it was maybe two years ago with some of the work that's been done by West Des Moines IT and, but we want to take it to even further level with isolating the Westcom system, the Westcom network within the West Des Moines. So right now they're more intertwined together. And so our goal is, is to really kind of create this line of separation between the two networks. So still running over similar fiber ring to, to the member communities. For example, we're connected to Westcom by fiber through West Des Moines fiber ring, but they're all on separate fibers. The network server setup that we're, we're looking to do and kind of re-host is all going to be on separate equipment, but it's still going to be managed by West Des Moines IT, but we're now isolating each other's networks, which is really important for that kind of this additional security layer.
Other questions, council?
Yeah, Matt, so glad to welcome Windsor Heights and the Westcom family of communities. It's a great addition. It's a natural addition based upon the geographic proximity. So after three years, then they'd be able to bind a full membership then, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And after that, after, as we're looking at growing Westcom and adding new facilities, is there any other communities out there that you think could be good additions to Westcom?
There's, there's definitely communities that have had conversations with us about it. We're not in the business of recruiting any communities. They're always coming to us. There's been some conversations of Urbanale and Johnston, just because of their location next to each other and they do a lot of starting to do some closest unit response between the two communities, but that is not something that we're necessarily actively seeking. At this point in time, with our current facility status, I don't know if we could take on a community of that size without then having to make a substantial staffing and facility change. But it's definitely things that we're going to plan in, in case they may happen in the kind of a facility plan that is a part of a, a action step in the strategic plan of okay, at what point is our kind of breaking point in this current facility? Now that we're going to get a little bit more growing room of how much staff we can have in the dispatch center. And then what's that trigger point to be looking at a new facility? And then when we look at a new facility, what is the ultimate build out of Westcom? I think there's, you get to a point where operationally it doesn't make sense for certain communities extended out into the county to be a part of Westcom. It really has to have an operational, makes sense operationally for us. And so there's maybe a few communities that would be that, maybe a few counties if they wanted to do that. But I don't think it's much beyond where we're at today.
When you put it, when you put Windsor Heights in and you talk about divesting, right? And that's, that's a tricky one of somebody wanting to leave. You know, and if it ever happened, what, how does that happen? I think it's tricky to get somebody in late in the game. I'm all for Windsor Heights and in the position they're coming in. It's tough. We've had the talks with Dart and others, I mean, Metro Waste. How do you bring others in? What's the investment from the past? Obviously, five cities or four cities paved the way. You put the infrastructure in. You now come in and you put some fiber into your city hall and you're a partner, right? Obviously, you're not getting the investment more than your 3% of assets back that, right? Windsor Heights, if I remember, would be 3% of the puzzle.
Yeah, they would be the population wise.
No more dollars than 3% eventually of the entire asset base.
Right.
Would that be correct?
It's all population based, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but my problem with that is, is that we're we're at the beginning of this. Clive is early, right? Our population base will max out. Heaviest investment was early. Right? And now they're coming in later with probably lower dollars to get to that equal. And as their population grows, it, it doesn't seem like it would grow proportionally and dollars in equal assets. Do you see what I'm saying? Cause the assets are already there preloaded. You're now coming in with dollars. You'll never catch up to the full asset base, but as long as your population grows fast enough, you now own a majority of the entire asset.
Well, I guess I would, what I would say, councilmember McCoy, is I, I don't think that's going to be an issue because I think there's going to need, still need to be substantial investments coming in the future. And I think it's a benefit to Clive, for example, to bring in a Waki, right? Right, is, right. So when you have like a Waki come in, for example, who is growing leaps and bounds and population number will be substantially higher. When we get to that big number of a new facility, that also means Clive's number is going to substantially go down. And also a radio system like we've constructed is going to need to be reinvested in at some point, which is like we had to reinvest through the digital system to replace the analog system. There's going to be something else in the future. We hope it's not maybe quite the substantial investment because we have the tower sites now. And who knows what radio systems look like with, with technology in the future. So I guess I would say that there's still going to be substantial investments to be made. And now all the member communities, regardless if you're a full authority member or you're a provisional authority member, you're a lot, you're on the hook for participating in that capital cost outside of the Westcom normal capital budget. So for example, the, the main asset that everybody's investing into that the three original owners invested in is the digital radio system. Norwalk was in a unique situation seven years ago. And this is how they've become a full authority member is they had to provide a tower site and then pay for a substantial amount of equipment in that tower site to, so they could be live on the, on the system. But that tower, we've also all benefited from, from a redundancy standpoint. So there's actually specific things in the 2080 that talk about, that we didn't have before that talk about how these capital expenses are going to be decided. And that it needs to be, you know, agreement of the management committee that if you have an asset that's specifically for a community that's growing, we're going to determine what percentage of that is for the growing community. And that there may be a small percentage that go to all the communities because we're going to benefit from the redundancy. So is it 9010? For like a new tower site way out west someday. Hopefully we won't need to do that with the state radio system because now we can roam onto the Dallas County sites. So maybe we, we won't need a new tower site someday. But we've really thought through that in the 2080 to take that into account for future capital expenses to make sure that who benefits is paying.
And so for those first three years of Windsor Heights, they're paying in, they're really not getting any of that asset.
Yeah, they're not getting anything. They're, and they're not, they're, they're not getting any rights to assets until you hit the full authority member. So even Waki still has about a year and a half or two years and then they'll be seven years in the system where then they have rights. So now they've, they've invested that substantial amount of dollars at that point. And then the, the owners felt comfortable. Okay, that's seven, eight years feels right that you're vested in the system now at that point.
Okay. Remove the resolution approving 2080.
Moved by John, executed by Michael. Further discussion? Ted, did you have anything?
No, Matt answered my questions. Thank you, though.
Any other discussion? Seeing none with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Matt. Chief Rainey, thank you for your work and arguably one of the, probably one of the top three collaborative projects that has come out of this greater Des Moines region in 25 years. So great to see this addition, Matt. Thank you. Don't go far though. Are you just going to address from up there? Well, so we'll, we'll move then to action item number three, which is Central Iowa Water Trails. We have some guests with us and Matt, why don't you?
Yeah, I'll just start it off, Your Honor. So over the last year, there's been, and I know the council is well aware of the discussions that have been happening related to the Central Iowa Water Trails. Assistant, I really started off with a conversation at the NPO level. I know councilmember Weaver was involved with that as the exec committee. And so what you're going to see tonight is an evolution of that to a point where there's going to be an organization in place and a lot of great things happening and positioning Clive as a community that has multiple sites identified along this trail network as being a part of the governance structure, taking advantage of the marketing opportunities that will come along with it. So I wanted to Hannah Emmon, who I know you're all from. So I wanted to Hannah Emmon, who I know you're all familiar with, with the Great Outdoors Foundation is is also leading this effort and here tonight to provide a presentation to you and answer your questions regarding what the proposal is.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to have Maggie McClellan, who is actually the project manager for Central Iowa Water Trails up here to do part of this presentation. But first of all, it's so good to see all of you in person. It seems like forever ago I was here before, but we've made a lot of progress since then. And just a quick reminder, Matt alluded to this, you know, this really started in 2017 with the MPO's engineering study. And then we took that into an incubator stage to understand what is going to be the permanent longstanding entity. We hired Severson, Nikki Severson and Scott Racker to lead us through this project of which the mayor and Matt have been a part of. And then we came to you and took your feedback. I think you're going to see some of those changes that were reflected from the feedback we refer received from you. And so today we're going to be talking about the final product. So I know that cities are dealing with a lot these days and we appreciate Clive's inherent understanding of how important recreation and conservation is. That is the center of of the heartbeat of Clive. And so when we look at a regional entity, we think that this will make all the communities stronger in the outdoor recreation and bring us all together. And it's certainly something that we've worked on as a region for about 18 months now. So the benefit of this regional entity, first of all, will be a cohesive user experience, including signage, consistent, long-term maintenance. And then I think what we're most excited about is that regional marketing. We will have one brand, but being able to show the personality of all the assets. When we did these studies of what users do when they come to this area, they usually stay for three days. So they may come for something, but then they're going to other communities. And so that regional marketing and having that cohesive user experience is crucial for this long-term attraction of not only visitors, but hopefully potential residents as well. And then streamlined communication from the DNR. So when we have issues, the DNR will communicate to us and then we will communicate to all the cities specific to water trails on water maintenance and safety, which is so crucially important and having a coordinated safety plan for all the region. And then funding back to the jurisdictions for funding for maintenance and capital improvements. So I'm going to let Maggie talk you through the actual operating structure and then we'll be open for questions. Thanks, Hannah. Good evening, everybody. So as Hannah said, this has been a long process. We started this governance process well over a year ago when we engaged Nikki and Scott to oversee this. And they really started off by doing individual interviews with all of the city managers and supervisors just to kind of gauge their knowledge of of the project itself, as well as what their expectations would be for this new governing entity. From there, we then started conducting facilitated sessions with these same members, starting in September and conducting them through December, holding, I think, at least 10 over the course of that time to really come to consensus consensus and put together what that 2080 agreement was going to look like. At the same time, we also held a focus group with some of our private sector partners just to understand what their ongoing expectations and participation would be in this project as well. And then, of course, as Hannah said, had ongoing updates, not only to our own executive committee and governance committee, but also to the elected officials as well, collecting their feedback and making the necessary revisions based on the feedback that they provided. So in looking at the 2080 agreement, it was the charge of the governance working group that I spoke of over the course of those meetings from September to December to draft and come to consensus on those terms. And I believe you have the final draft of that agreement in your packets. So a few of the high points regarding that agreement that I want to share with you all tonight is the fact that this is a perpetual agreement with a termination notification due by July 1, within a two-year sunset to help us make make any necessary plans for somebody who decides to leave the agreements. All of the water trails projects outside of the five downtown Des Moines projects will be owned, operated and maintained by each of the jurisdictions. This would also include the responsibility of the costs of maintenance and repair for any upland amenities with those projects. The governing entity for water trails would be then responsible for any in-water en route maintenance over the course of the season. And then, of course, liability is under the jurisdiction and covered under Iowa code.
Explain what that means, the on-water maintenance?
Yep. Yeah, so anything en route with all of the waterways within Central Iowa, it would be removing any snags, any debris, essentially any hazardous obstacle for the users engaging with the waterways.
So Clive would be responsible for that in our jurisdiction?
You would be responsible for any upland amenities as part of your proposed projects. The governing entity would do the on-water maintenance.
Trees from bridges, up against bridges, the trees that come down, that type of thing?
Yes. All right. So then moving on to the next section of the agreement, looking at funding. When you look at that funding section, it's important to note that the the funding that would come from the jurisdictions would not go towards any of the operations or the maintenance of the downtown sites. The contribution from the jurisdictions will help support the regional operation and administrative expenses of the entity, which includes many of the items that handed listed, including that marketing, the public education and notification, the water safety, development services, fundraising events, and of course, that on-water maintenance that we just talked about. So of that regional operations and administrative budget, 70% of that would be supported by the jurisdictions. And then 30% of that would be covered by private fundraising. So in determining how the 70% of that operations and administrative budget will be supported by each of the individual jurisdictions, the working group came to consensus of a funding formula based on the following weights that you see there on the screen. So 25% drainage area, 25% access points and 50% population. As we were having some of these conversations with each of the councils, some of the feedback we received is that, you know, for a lot of the waterways here in Central Iowa, it's not a one-to-one comparison. So internalizing some of that feedback that we received, we went back to the drawing board and actually implemented further weight for the access points. So what you see on the screen there is the breakdown of the weights for those access points. So for the navigable waters, Des Moines and Rockwood Rivers, it holds a full weight. For some of those water bodies that are not as large but still navigable, such as Beaver Creek, North, Middle and Skunk Rivers, they hold a weight of 0.75. And for the others that are not as navigable, Four Mile Creek, Mud and Walnut Creeks holds a weight of 0.5. So what you see up on the screen then is the output from that funding formula. And you'll see there on the line for Clive, your annual investment for this first fiscal year would be about $14,000. And I want to make note here that this would be your guaranteed commitment for this first year. We were hearing some feedback from groups that they weren't ready to make a commitment yet till they understood how their annual contribution may be reallocated based on cities that decide not to join on. So we went ahead and decided to lock in that rate for this first year. So no matter who in who is in or who is out, Clive would be contributing that $14,000 for this first fiscal year. And then the governing board for the new entity would have the authority to dictate what the funding formula looked like in the future, depending on other communities that decided to come on at a later date, as well as deciding what the budget would look like for future years as well.
Can I hold you there one second?
Yep.
So if we agree to this, we're locked in at $14,000. A few of these other cities do not agree, right? Even for the first year, we're still locked into the $14,000.
Correct.
However, we won't know what the funding would be for year two because that would change significantly. Let's say if several of them dropped out or never came on board the first year.
Yep, so again, that would be a discussion of the board to determine, you know, when we figure out who decides not to join on this year. That would then be a decision of the board to determine whether we need to do budget cuts or whether those that do decide to join on are willing to take on some more of that reallocation of the budgets that the cities that didn't sign on would need to cover. But for this first year, with those guaranteed locked-in rates, any holes that need to be filled would be covered by private fundraising dollars to get us through this first year with the budget. But then, as I said, when we looked at the next fiscal year, it would be at the direction of the board, depending on what those members feel comfortable with in terms of doing budget cuts or reallocating those funds to contribute more for the next fiscal year.
Additionally, the budget would be slightly changed because obviously we wouldn't be providing on-water maintenance for those jurisdictions that chose that to be a part of it. So there would be a natural reduction into the budget. So a combination of those things is what the new board would address in that next year for budgeting.
But at that point, we'd be locked in for two more years that we would have to pay regardless of what the board decided because we have a two-year sunset.
Correct.
So it's out of your hands the first year a bit. For two, three years, it's out of your hands of what your two, year two and year three could look like.
Right. And I think some of those concerns understand that. And yes, you're correct. I think some of those concerns would be addressed once we see what the board composition looks like because with it being 70% jurisdictions, 30% private fund or private business leaders and citizens, ever all those jurisdictions would be in that same boat, if you will. And so that would be a decision within the the board to do that.
Can you tell us how many entities have signed on currently?
So thus far, those that have gone for formal approval include Des Moines, Altoona, Bondurant and Johnston have all gone through their councils in the same similar process that we're doing tonight. Moving forward in the next couple of weeks, we'll be hearing from Urban Dale, West Des Moines, all of the others. Thus far, from those that don't have formal council action yet, though we've received very positive feedback and anticipate that majority of these will will sign on.
And the and the five communities at the bottom of the list with their $5,000 contribution, just there, there are no water sites.
Correct. So there are adjacent cities where they don't necessarily have access points within their city limits, but they understand and see the benefit and the draw of this project from a regional aspect and would like to have a seat at the table with essentially a buy-in with that $5,000 fee.
So naturally, this could be a sticking point for communities. And I appreciate the effort to to lock in a first year. But Michael's point's a really solid point, and that is we don't know until we have a better idea of who's buying in and who isn't to what our commitment's going to be for the next two years. And so I, you know, help us to feel better about that.
Okay.
I think that's your challenge.
Okay.
Right now, and I'm interrupting your presentations, but I think these are really valid points that need to be addressed.
Sure, sure. Well, as Hannah said, I think it'll be a little bit more clear too when we look at the board composition. That's actually, it's a great segue because we're headed into that governance structure now. So we'll get through kind of looking at who would be a part of the board, making some of these decisions. And we'll kind of go from there of seeing what other questions you may have and seeing how we move forward.
Sure. I want to stop. Ted, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to jump in on that, Mayor. Obviously, there's no guarantees on on the communities that haven't voted yet. I do know just based off of some of my participation in this process that those big, those big dollar number communities, those are they're all pretty well committed to this process. Now, the one possible exception, of course, is Ankeny. And so we'll have to see how they come out. But the other ones, at least in my opinion, based off my interactions, they're pretty solid and they're they're invested in this process. So, you know, could maybe one, one of the smaller ones back out? Yeah, but they would have less impact. So again, outside of Ankeny, that's been my perception. So just FYI on that.
It's kind of been my perception too, to be honest. But it's been a while. I haven't been as engaged. So I didn't know if you might have an update on that. But could we go back to the list?
Sure.
Ted, that's good input as well, I think, but but really valid discussion points. So it's a commitment for the first year. Obviously, the next two years, you know, let's get everybody on board. Let's see where it's at. The burden is probably spread equally, I guess, if you don't have signups.
The the burden would be go through the formula process. So of course, you know, those larger, you know, like Polk County. So the if the, I guess it would be up to the board, but the assumption of how we wrote the MOU is that the burden would go through the formula. So the larger, so it would be directly proportional to Clive's current formula. So it wouldn't be as significant of an increase as say, like a Polk County.
Very good, okay. Yeah, please proceed. We kind of got kind of stopped you there in your presentation.
That's okay. Great comments and questions. So as we said, we'll move into looking at the governing entity and the board. So I won't touch on this too much as Hannah spoke to it at the beginning of her presentation. But just as a reminder of what this group came to the consensus of of what this regional entity will really do and what their role would be. And the biggest thing will just be ensuring a seamless and cohesive user experience for anybody using the water trails at any point along the waterways. Also, they'll oversee that public notification and education system, the water trails marketing. So the regional marketing that Hannah spoke to and any events tied to that act as that single point of contact for the DNR. You know, conduct the the annual independent audit as well as oversee the operating budget, collect the revenues and then reallocate to the regional jurisdictions. And then the biggest thing, as we talked about, that en route water trails maintenance. So just a quick overview of the board. Each position would be a three-year term that would be staggered initially. We're looking at having a board of no more than 30 members. We understand what happens when you get too big. So putting that that ceiling on there. Our representation would be reflective of that funding mix that we discussed. So the 70% public representation, the 30% private. The jurisdiction representatives would be appointed by the mayor and would be an elected official. Same thing with the county representatives. And then our private representatives would initially be nominated by the current Central Iowa Water Trails Executive Committee. So the board composition would look with one representative from each city with an access point who chooses to sign on. Des Moines would have two representatives on that board, given their increased contribution and liability with those downtown sites for a total of 13. We'd have one collective representative from those partner cities, so those cities without an access point who choose to buy in. Two representatives from Polk County, again, due to their contribution amounts, as well as one each from Dallas and Warren Counties, one from Polk County Conservation, and then seven business and/or community leaders to reflect that private sector funding and an inclusive collective voice of the regional trails network. We would also have two non-voting members. So the Great Outdoors Foundation would have representation, but they would be non-voting. Again, some of the feedback we received from this group. And then the DNR as well, they would be non-voting. So when looking at that private representation on the board, it would be those seven community leaders to reflect that private sector funding. They would be nominated by the executive committee with recommendations coming from the supporting committees of the water trails entity. Consideration would be given to individuals who reflect the private funding mix, water trails, user groups and a diverse community to ensure we get that inclusive and diverse representation. We have drafted a matrix that would help ensure that we have representation across Central Iowa, but also looking that they must reside or work within Polk, Warren or Dallas Counties. Our executive committee would consist of anywhere from 10 to 12 members. And you'll see why that is here in a second with that range. We would have our standard four officers with the chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer. We would also have representation on this exec committee from our committee chairs. You'll see listed there are standing committees written into our bylaws, which include finance, operations and maintenance, inclusion, environmental conservation. And then we did end up making, this is a change probably from the last version you saw, making safety a standing committee. As we know, that safety is a huge concern and a huge priority for the project as a whole. The GOF representative would also have a seat on the exec committee but would not hold office. And then in looking again at the contributions made, there would be a standing position by Des Moines and West Des Moines representatives. If they were not currently one of the officers or one of the committee chairs, they would be added on to the exec committee to give us that range, as I mentioned, to ensure they have that standing position. So just real quick, next steps in this entire process. We have finalized that new governing structure. And so we're going through the process now of setting up the new nonprofit entity, the new 501(c)(3). We're looking for confirmation for participation from all of the councils by June 15. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll be hearing from everybody with their plans to participate. Then we'd start looking at some of those appointments being made by the mayors and the board of supervisors. And then we would be looking at the new board, probably in how timing is shaking out more, looking at August rather than July. But it's going to be fast and furious here as we start signing everybody on. So from there, I will open it up for any remaining questions.
Well, great presentation. A ton of work done by you, Maggie, and Hannah, and the entire group for a long time. So.
That's kind of.
Coming down to this. So questions, council?
I'd move the resolution approving the 2080.
It's moved by John, seconded by Susan. Is there further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. So that passes five to zero. And so then the next motion B is to approve the appointment of council member Ted Weaver as the City of Clive's representative to the Water Trails Board.
I think McCoy wanted to move that one.
With excitement, I would move that Ted Weaver and his boys be on the Water Trail Committee.
Thank you.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Ted, any wisecracks? Seeing now with the council, please vote. That also passes five to zero. Michael?
Yeah, one comment. Thank you for taking all that input. And I know it was more than just us. It was, you had a board and I talked to a lot of them over the time you've been doing this and it's been pretty exciting. You know, so a few of the things, 30-member board, holy buckets, right? I'd be careful with that, you know, anything 17-board, a five-board member, membership here is hard enough to wrangle, but 17 or 30 is huge. So good luck. Your last comment, I guess I would caution, I wanted to say before voting, but it doesn't matter. I was voting for it. I think it's an exciting project. But the seven private members, board members, I would just be keeping an eye on it myself as an elected official. That that seven doesn't become more than 30% of your total board because they're only giving 30% of the funding. So I'd be cautious in talking to Ted Weaver as our board member to keep that under a 30% threshold, whatever it is. As private versus the public voting rights.
Yeah, and I think that's written. Within the bylaws. And the other thing that didn't make it into the presentation, but the other change that was made upon hearing feedback from all the jurisdictions is there's actually two co-chairs, one private, one public, so one elected. So that way, and the reasoning being that, that because 30% of the budget is being supported by the business community, we have to keep some of that in there, plus the $33.5 million that they've invested within the project so far. So I appreciate it, and we wish it wasn't 17, too, but that's what the process bore out, so.
Maggie and Hannah, thank you both.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, we'll move to item number four, which is a resolution approving a contact, a contract rather, with Resource Environmental Solutions LLC. The landscape design of Indian Hills Greenway, the amount of $24,651. And Richard?
Thank you. It's, it's nice to be in front of the council for the first time in person since I started in March of 2020. This is, this is a new experience for me. I know, right? Yeah, but that was before I actually started. So yeah, so this is a new experience for me here since I've started. Tonight represents, this contract represents the next steps in the Indian Hills work. And we're very excited about this. It really represents the start of doing the actual creek restoration work. And one of the things we committed to the residents out there when we started going through that and talking about clearing and grabbing that area was that we wanted to make sure, we worked with them pretty extensively to plan out, what does that landscape look like once this project is done? So we have a contract here with RES, which is formerly AES. They are the group that we've worked extensively on, the green belt management work. And so we think they're the right team to continue this work and really find a way to work with the residents to back up to this, this area to put together something that works for all of the neighbors, as well as something that is, creates an ecologically sound landscape, similar to what we're doing in the green belt when this project is all done. So we're really excited about the opportunity to start working with the residents out there. We'll kind of continue what we did during the pandemic. We'll meet out there. We'll walk with the residents. We'll hear what their concerns are behind their house, how they would like to see it look. And really plan out and really get ideas on what this looks like moving forward. So we're excited about the ability to continue this on and working with the residents out there.
Questions for Richard, council?
Move the resolution.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Discussion, Eric?
Come quick question.
Yeah.
Richard, as far as when they do their landscaping, how do we take into account the basic species? And, and are there steps they can take to mitigate that moving forward?
Yeah, so one of the things we'll do as part of this, we'll work with the residents to achieve the kind of physical look they want to see, put any sort of buffer or landscape there. But anything we do, we will do with native species and avoid any of the invasive species or species that naturalized through this area. Also, at that same time, we remove any additional invasive species that are left out there. There's not a ton left, but there are some large honeysuckle bushes that are really close and adjacent to those property owners. And then one of the things we'll do as part of that, we'll also establish a maintenance plan that gives us the guidance on what we need to do on a daily and a yearly and weekly basis to make sure that this stays a healthy landscape.
Follow-up question then, as we look at restructuring of, of that trail on Indian Hills.
Yeah.
What type of consideration do we look at with stormwater management and bio cells incorporated into that to eliminate some of that runoff and erosion?
Yep. So we'll, we'll have to meet all of our stormwater ordinances as, as part of that. And one of the things we asked RES to do is actually have a landscape architect on this team for a small portion of this. So what they'll do is they'll kind of verify that the proposed route of this trail is the right one through this area here. And then they will work to define some of those things, like what's the best spot to put some of those, those rain gardens? And we really want to do it in a way that creates an experience. So maybe there's certain areas where we focus very heavy on flowers, that would be butterfly attractors so that we could kind of pair that up with like a bench or something like that there. So we really, not just looking at this ecologically, but we want to be an experience as well for the, the residents and people that use this with the long-term, obviously planned, that this connects to the larger green belt trail.
And last quick question, will there be an opportunity, you mentioned benches right there, and that segues my final question. Would that be an opportunity for the public to maybe invest in a bench for a loved one or something of that nature? Contribute along that trail portion?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've kind of, in a lot of ways, had a very informal bench program for a lot of years. So what we're wanting to do, and we'll, we'll try to formalize that, get some brochures put together and get that out there and offer up opportunities for, for seating areas for anyone that may want to do that.
Well, you know, Richard, this is, this is a gem. And I'm really, really glad this is coming to fruition. I think it's a long time coming. And the key is, is, and you said it, is working with these residents to, to really have them be a part of it. And make it theirs, but make it all of ours. I think we have a real opportunity here to do something great. So pretty excited. Other comments, questions, council?
I'd agree. If we could get more individuals like Ted that showed up to thank staff for what they did in communication, really. I mean, that says a lot of what's. Of what, you know, residents coming in, we've worked really hard over the years with, with Public Works and others. Communication, 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 and it's paying off, and we just keep going.
Yep, absolutely. We've made a lot of relationships out there. Pete, myself, Matt, Rachel, you name it. You know, between the walks and the emails and the phone calls that we've gotten, we've, we've done a lot of, a lot of investment in the neighbors out there and really trying to understand how they use that space. And so we're excited to continue that.
One thing that'll be really important with this particular work is it's also a way for us to inform what's coming in the fall. So while they'll be working on the landscaping components in terms of talking with Richard and the RES team, we also know a lot of the heavy lifting is going to be coming this fall with the actual restoration work. So this is also an engagement part of the bigger project that's going to be happening. It's going to be real creative with, you know, removing rock here this fall or actually late summer and then really getting it in the fall and getting, starting to get the work done, knowing it's going to take a couple of years to get it back and restored.
Good stuff. It's been moved and seconded. Anything else? Seeing now, will the council please vote?
Got to hurry up to get to these pickleball rules.
Get our money's worth with you tonight, Richard.
No, Weaver boys, I'm pickleball courts is the new rule I read.
Passes five to zero. Thank you, Richard, and really looking forward to that one.
Yes, thank you. We are too.
So let's move to action item number five, which is motion to approve pickleball court rules and play, Richard?
Yes, I just want to, I want to give you a quick background on this. So we were approached by a resident that lives near the Wildwood Courts back in late December of 2020. And they were concerned about some of the, the issues that there's groups of pickleball players that come out and kind of dominate and monopolize the courts. And so what we decided to do was have this person come to the Parks and Recreation Board and kind of address their concerns and figure out how the, the Park Migration Board wanted to address that. So he came and he addressed some of the concerns, talked about what his issues, his issues were and why he wanted to make some changes out there. So the, the board decided it would be good to have staff do some research. So we, we saw what other communities around Clive were doing, or other communities that have pickleball courts. We also got together some pickleball group users, residents, as well as board members and staff to come up with a series of recommendations. So what we have before you is what we believe it will be the best possible rules and recommendations for play out there that really allow residents and people that just want to walk up and play, but still allow the ability for some of those groups. We realize that probably going to have to do some, you know, kind of targeted enforcement of kicking the groups off occasionally. But we think that's something that we can work with and.
We'll have McCoy do that.
So yeah, so I mean, and we're even talking about having one of those have a hooks out there for paddles. So, you know, and kind of on the pinball machines, you throw the quarters down, you know, there's a hook you could hang your paddle if you're up next. So it'll be a little bit of a targeted kind of learning experience because they're so popular out there. But we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to use the courts when they want to.
Well, that's the case. These are so popular. Know several non-Clive residents that use them religiously and brag about them a lot. And so it's just, it's fun to see that happening. I remember when Todd brought this to us, how many years ago, and he said pickleball, and I thought, what in the world is pickleball? And, and everybody loves it and plays it, and I probably couldn't play it.
Weaver thought it was a drinking game.
I'm sure.
The only thing I'd add is the resident that brought it forth is one of the key driving factors in getting these pickleball courts built and designed. So I give him a ton of credit. He's a national champion along with his son, a great guy. So he's been involved in this process for, for a long, long time. So.
Was that a motion?
It is a motion approved. Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Ted, anything from you?
Nope, I'm in agreement.
Seeing now, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Richard. Okay, last item, action item number six is a resolution approving the city manager employment agreement. July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2023. Our mayor pro town, council member Edwards is the chair of our personnel committee. And John, you, you, you carefully and graciously steward this process for us every year with a little bit of help from council member Weaver and myself. But you, you shoulder a lot of that burden. So if you'd carry us through this one one more time.
One more time. Just to review everyone on the process that we undertook. Sarah Noel Wilson engaged in a process which involved getting feedback from all the department heads and from each of the council members and mayor. And then, of course, we also solicited from the council members and mayor arithmetic assessment of our city manager's performance. And the feedback from all of that was uniformly positive. And high praise, wonderful comments. Of course, the committee did not want any of this to go to his head, so we did make suggestions for improvement. I wanted that to be on the record.
Thank you, John.
So Ted, do you want to step in with something?
No, I just said thank you for bringing that up.
So ultimately, based on all the feedback, we were very pleased with the job our city manager is doing. And so we're recommending based on the merit matrix, two and a half percent increase based on the matrix and a 1% cost of living for three and a half percent increase in his base salary for next year. And as part of the process, we're at the end of a two-year employment agreements. We're recommending another two-year employment agreement. And with that agreement, there are just a couple of minor modifications in addition to the rate of pay. $25 increase per month in the vehicle allowance and a .75 increase in deferred compensation. So that, those are the changes in the employment agreement. Legal council has reviewed the agreement and deems it to be in good shape. So that's what we have. We're very pleased with Matt's performance. He's under, right now, the average for comparable cities. And so that's how the merit figured into that. So happy to answer any questions from anyone?
John, I'm just going to make a comment about the process and about how far that's come. You know, in about an eight to 10-year period of time, from, I, I think, a really basic process. I think, I want to call it sophisticated, but it's, but a, but a very efficient, thorough process. But I think bringing in Sarah Noel Wilson to help us to gain the 360 feedback from across our, our leadership team here and, and department heads is, is really just outstanding. And it's really helped us to, to, I think, make great decisions and forward decisions. And so I, I'm very, very pleased with, with where this has come. And so I think, I think our results show that. Other questions from the council?
Ted, did you have anything to add?
Well, the only thing I'd say is, you know, I think that we're really blessed here in Clive. You know, since I've been on the council, we've had Denny Henderson and now Matt as our city manager. And, you know, that's two really high-quality city managers that not every community can say that. And so, you know, I, I think this report and, and the salary increases are well merited.
With Adam, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any further discussions? Seeing now, will the council please vote?
Pete in the wings.
That passes five to zero. Thank you, council, and thank you, committee members. Matt, thank you.
It's an honor and a pleasure. Appreciate your support on that and look forward to serving this community for many years. And I would echo your comments, your honor. I think the, the process is very beneficial to me in terms of having Sarah involved because we take a lot of the comments that are received and incorporate that into my growth plan and the work that she does with me for the, for the ongoing time period. And so that, all those comments are, you know, very much appreciated by me. And I want to continue to grow and serve this community as best I can, and we're going to definitely do that. So I appreciate your support.
Outstanding. Thank you. Very good. We'll move to reports. Pete, let's start with you.
Thank you, your honor. First, thanks to everybody for putting up with the hustle we had right before the meeting started. We've been practicing, making sure this technology works well. Always a few surprises when we're all getting back together for the first time. But from what I can tell from watching tonight, it's been a very productive process so far. So we hope to keep improving, including finding some ways that we can help everybody see the presenters when they're presenting as well. Earlier this week, I had a chance that Councilman Klein created for us to go and present at the annual meeting for the Country Club West Homeowners Association. So thank you very much for that, Councilman. I'm going to have more details to share with anybody who's interested, but one big headline I want to share with everybody now from the meeting is how much that group expressed their deep appreciation for the amenities that the City of Clive provides. Specifically, the green belt and the natural state of the green belt, the trail, the pickleball courts, the library services. I, I mentioned this to Richard earlier today. They were extremely complimentary of how well the library has done providing services throughout the pandemic and then getting things ramped up again now that we're into something closer to like it was before. So kudos to all the staff and to the council. So kudos to all the staff and to the council for well-earned praise from a big neighborhood here in Clive. And I'd be happy to share more details from that meeting with anybody who's interested. Earlier this week, he received an email from Dennis Harkin, our IT Services Manager, about phishing attacks. And he listed a couple of high-profile attacks. I don't need to name them. I think we're all aware. There are hundreds and hundreds of others that we never hear about. This is rampant. It is extremely important that when we're working with our email, that we're all being vigilant because that's where most of the incursions into these organizations are starting. It's with an unintended click or a quick click before you had a chance to look at an email address. We just completed our phishing testing that we do as just a normal part of training our employees to be on the eye, to watching out for these things. And of the 170 some people, or excuse me, 130 some people who received this test email, we only caught nine, which is a pretty good rate. What's even more important about than that is that we don't have a pattern of repeat offenders. So people might get caught once or twice, but we don't have a group of people that keep getting caught over and over again, which makes us think that we're doing something right with sort of the teaching. And people are actually bringing this to heart and getting better at identifying something that they shouldn't click on.
So you threaten them after the first time or what?
Well, they do go to a really awkward email site or a website afterwards that maybe they feel a little shame and that's why they don't make a mistake again. Training site, training site. That's right. So thank you to Dennis and to, to James for their good work on that. It's making a big difference. In addition to all of the other security measures that they surround our entire environment with to make sure that we have a great tool for the residents and the businesses and for all the staff. Matt's going to, I'm sure, talk more about this. We're looking forward to some of our one-on-one meetings in preparation for the strategic planning session later this summer. There'll be a lot of topics that we bring up. One that I, I hope we have a chance to discuss will be some of the items around the water resources master planning process. That's a segue to talking about what's coming up later this month. We'll have a very rich conversation about some key elements of that water mass, water resources master plan and some interesting policy questions for all of you as well. So we're looking forward to bringing our friends from HDR to our next July meeting so that they can take us through that discussion.
It's a full plate, young man.
Lot are going on. And that's not even the list of all the things that we're telling stories about right now. I can identify about 14 right now on the shortlist that are cooking. But great to be busy, great to have so many positive stories to tell.
Indeed. Questions for Pete, council? Thank you, Pete. Ted, you're next.
Nothing additional tonight, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Eric?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Thank you, John.
I'll just refer everyone to the MAC information I sent on the American Rescue Plan. I think Matt may actually comment on that. Other thing, just as an aside, we had a, I received a question today as far as what that big lake is called that's out in Country Club. And so I don't think Doug is still on the line, but
He is.
Oh, Doug is still there?
He's still there.
Still there. So it is listed in various places as the Country Club Lake. The Clive Lake, which I think was on the original documentation, and Lake Country Club is what you see when you Google it. And I just thought it was interesting that there are three different names. It seems to me it'd be nice if we could find a way to call it one thing.
I agree.
And anyway, so I'll just throw that as something that we can look at.
Thank our friends on the Country Club.
I would think.
We might have some fun conversations about that. John, thank you. I would just like to encourage everybody to be at Food Court Fridays tomorrow night. It's going to be warm, but should be good. They've all been, I think, pretty successful so far. And I call it the new Clive after five. And I think it's exactly what we're looking for. So great job by staff making that happen. And we'll look forward to the next one, Susan.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Richard. And Lanan Park is looking good. There are some recent changes in Lanan Park that I've seen driving by. And I actually had to get out and walk over there to see if it was really happening over by the, the pool and, and that area. But it is still the, I, I have to say, the highest used park number wise. And we're seeing some changes over there and I appreciate it. I know, I think, you know, all the residents over in that area appreciate it.
And to that point, we have Saturday morning, the, the mini pitch, grand opening, if you will, ribbon cutting, goal kick, first goal.
It looks nice, too.
So we're excited to have that. So come on down. Michael, thank you. Madam, council?
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Speaking of Lanan, all the staff were chuckling because, so during this meeting, we actually had somebody light one of the trash cans on fire next to the shelter. And unfortunately, has caused some damage to the shelter. And we're going to be looking at this tomorrow.
Oh, oh, goodness.
Yeah. So this happened actually at the beginning of the meeting. That's why Rick left and then came back. So we're going to be looking at this though. It doesn't seem at this point that we have any structural issues, but we're going to staff will be working hard tomorrow to get this cleaned up and get in good shape for Saturday's event. So I know the, obviously FD was there very quickly, very close, and PD was looking into how this happened. So anyway, hate to put a damper on that, but I just wanted to make you aware so you weren't surprised by it on Saturday, if you're there in terms of some work that we'll do to try to get this as, as good as we can get it in the short timeframe that we have and then make more of a fuller repair following that. So just wanted to make you all aware so you weren't surprised by it.
Like I said, close down Lanan Park. Oh, boy.
As your city manager, I know I'm sometimes a balloon popper. Sorry about that. So in terms of something to really make the council aware of, and I'll follow up with some additional details that we've received from Des Moines Water Works tomorrow. But the drought is getting significant and flow levels in the, in the rivers are, are difficult right now. And so they hit a point at about 90% capacity here just yesterday. So something that we're monitoring, staff will be involved in conversations if there's any kind of water shortage plans put in, implemented by so Des Moines Water Works has a plan set for that, that we match that as a kind of, as a purchase capacity customer. The first phase of that is usually a voluntary reduction in irrigation. And as things evolve here in terms of, we haven't received any direction at this point, but I'm just kind of setting the expectation for the council, what may come at some point. But we'll work with our Des Moines Water Works partners in terms of communications on that, if that, if it does come to that point where those, that information needs to be going out. We've been trying and Pete and the mayor and mayor's letter as well, have been doing a great job of just early this spring, even educating folks on thoughts related to irrigation schedules because we knew this was coming just based on the low raccoon levels coming out of the winter. So just make you aware of that. And again, I'll have some more detail for you in my weekly update tomorrow. To council member Edwards is a comment related to MAC and the ARP Act funding. We have some time as a non-entitlement community, we haven't received any formal notice from the state yet. And when those dollars will be released and based on the conference, the initial conversation we had on this, my intent is as we touch base here prior to strategic planning is get a sense of what your thoughts are. Maybe we do some, some community surveying as well as a part of that. And then strategic planning, because we're going to have some time is to have that as a discussion point and really kind of honing in on what the council wants to see in terms of usage of those dollars. So just wanted to follow up on that. Other than that, your honor, that's all I have unless you have any questions to me.
Thank you, council. Questions from that? A lot.
preload McQuillan with some positive news next time, will you? Just to finish, at least.
We need to get that fixed right away.
Right.
Thank you. I know our great team will do everything they can. That's a tough one. However, we have great things happening. And this is going to be a great weekend, summers here. Life is good. So thank you all. Matthew, any other correspondence that we need to be aware of?
I have no bad news.
That's the Matthew.
Anything else for the good of the hour? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn us at 7:39 PM.